Good evening. The City of Riverbank, City Council Local Redevelopment Authority Board Meeting are now in session. Today is Tuesday, July twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
Continue standing, please.
And we pray. Heavenly Father, I just ask at you. Grant this city council the authority that they need in order to make the proper decisions. Be with each and every one of them and be with each person that has to speak here tonight. We just ask all these things in Jesus' name and we pray. Thank you.
Do it. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Here.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Here.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
Here.
Mayor O'Brien?
Here. There'll be no changes to the agenda. Any council authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Saying none, we're going to proceed to seven point one, a proclamation to Golden Valley Health Center. And today we have probably their entire staff. If you all will come on up, I would appreciate it. Thank you all for being here tonight, not only being here, but for what you do for this city and for our community. So, the City of Riverbank Proclamation, National Health Center Week, two thousand and twenty-three. Whereas over fifty years, community health centers have provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive primary and preventative health care to our nation's medically underserved community, delivering value to and having a significant impact on America's healthcare system. Whereas, community health centers are a critical element to the health system serving rural, suburban, frontier, and urban population, and often providing nationwide. Community health centers serve one of the every five residents of rural areas. Whereas disabilities can affect all people regardless of race, age, gender, or social status, and is the essence of life is not embodied by physical or mental perfection, but in the integral part of human spirit. And whereas everyday, community health centers develop new approaches to the integrating a wide range of services beyond primary care, including oral health, vision, behavioral health, and pharmacy services to meet the needs and challenges to their communities. Health centers have more than doubled their behavioral health workforce force in the last decade to meet America's growing need for behavioral health services. Whereas, community health centers are governed by patient majority boards, ensuring that patients are engaged in their own healthcare decisions. Whereas during National Health Center Week, we celebrate the legacy of America's community health centers and their vital role in shaping the past, present, and the future of America's healthcare systems. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Riverbank that August eighth through the twelfth of two thousand and twenty-three is National Health Center Week within the City of Riverbank. And I encourage all Americans to take part in this week too by visiting their local health center and celebrating the important partnership between America's community health centers and the communities they serve. Signed today, July twenty-fifth. So here we have, I'll start off with Yamalet. She's going to introduce her entire group. You're late, but you're up here.
She had to close.
She did have to close. So during the pandemic, these individuals were here in this city and throughout, providing the healthcare services, preventative, the vaccinations, the monitoring, the record-keeping. That's just a small part of what they did, plus they did their normal medical. So I want to thank you all. And we're going to take a good picture, but I'm going to give it to you first. And I'll let you do the honors of introductions and anyone and everyone concerned. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you so much to the Riverbank City Council, each and every one of you. I have Stephanie Palmerin here, who is one of our supervisors. I also have Melinda Marshall, who is our VP of Operations. I have Amy Carroll, who is our VP of Communications. I have Jorge Fernandez, who's our Director of Behavior Health. I also have Mario Jimenez, who is one of our community health workers assigned to Riverbank, and he's also a resident of Riverbank. And we also have Ms. Annette Hodge, who's our Director of Operations as well. And my name is Emile Bayadolid. I'm the Director of Government Committee Affairs for the organization. It's such a pleasure. Thank you so much. During National Center Week, please ensure that you visit any of our clinics. We'll be celebrating all week long. And so, you know, I think you already said everything on, so thank you.
We're all going to take a good picture. Not on the agenda, but we do have another speaker for a presentation. Jacob?
So one more certificate for Golden Valley Health Centers on behalf of Senator Avrata Gill. Just like to recognize the City of Riverbank's proclamation that the week of August eighth through twelfth be known as National Health Center Week. Thank you to Golden Valley Health Centers and the City of Riverbank for recognizing the importance of health centers to our community and residents. The accessibility and quality healthcare that is provided at these centers is a necessity for many throughout our district. Thank you very much and congratulations.
Item eight, public comment. At this time, members of the public may come on any item not appearing on the agenda and with the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes, and time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law matters, presented during public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. Do we have any public comment?
Evening, Jamie Agers reside at seventy-seven thirty McHenry Avenue, Modesto. That's within the unincorporated portion of San Slos County, but within the proposed Riverwalk specific plan project area. You've heard from me many times over the past two years, and you're very well aware that we are currently obtaining signatures to get an urban limit initiative on the November two thousand and twenty-four ballot. That will put the decision-making for where and how and when growth on the city's western boundary in the hands of the city residents, should it be approved. Our position is that that is the area where the soils are of highest quality. They're classified by the State Department to document that, and homes should be built on soils of lesser quality. So when this project comes before you for consideration, we urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Any other public comments? None? Yes?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Just want to provide a brief legislative update. So the Senate and the Assembly are currently on summer recess. Just a few of our bills and where they're at before that summer recess. SB four seven zero, that's drought relief. On Tuesday, July eleventh, we received unanimous support for SB four seven zero in the Assembly Water, Parks, and Wildlife Committee with a final vote of fourteen to zero. This bill is now in Assembly Appropriations before moving to the Assembly floor. And SB two two six, that is our fentanyl bill. That bill failed to pass in the Assembly Public Safety Committee. That would have prohibited possession of certain controlled substances, including heroin and methamphetamine along with fentanyl, while armed with a loaded and operable firearm. And then SB three seven five, that was the COVID nineteen compliance credit. That bill also died in the suspense file hearing in the Senate Appropriations Committee. Any questions?
Two two six was the fentanyl?
Yep, that's correct. Yeah.
Are they going to reconsider or are they going to be resubmitted?
I'm talking with our legislative director. I think it's pretty much dead. We also have our cannabis bill. That one is currently on. It's a two-year bill. Quite a few of our bills have been moved to two-year, just given with how the climate is up in Sacramento, so yeah.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments? Tell the Senator thank you.
Of course.
We have any public comment online?
Mayor, there is no one on Zoom wishing to speak.
Right. We're going to move forward to the consent calendar. Item nine one, wave readings. Item nine two, approval of City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Board Minutes of June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Item nine three, acceptance of Riverbank Pool Resurfacing Project and authorization to file a notice of completion. Item nine four, resolution to award bid to the Sierra House Remodel Project to Harris Builders, Inc. and authorize execution of future change orders. Item nine five, resolution to award bid for wealth number thirteen Testwell Project to Eaton Drilling Company, LLC, and authorize execution of future change orders. Item nine six, resolution to approve and adopt the revised two thousand and twenty-three City of Riverbank Measure L expenditure plan project list. Is there anyone wishing to pull any of these items? Anyone need clarification on the items? I bring it to the council for consideration.
We'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve and a second on the consent calendar. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Item eleven one, designation of a voting delegate and alternate to attend the two thousand and twenty-three League of California Cities Annual Conference.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Every year, the League of California Cities, or CalCities, as it's more commonly known, holds a annual conference during which they consider a variety of resolutions that are brought forth by cities for items that can advocate on behalf of each of the cities, larger cities, smaller cities, depending on whether it's a public safety issue or a revenue and taxation issue. Those recommendations are brought forth to the policy committees and are considered before being brought forward to all of the cities for consideration. As is standard, they hold a general assembly during the annual conference, which this year will be held in September. And we are required to have one representative from the City of Riverbank. So tonight's recommendation is for the City Council to select a nominee as the designated voting delegate and then have an alternate. A change from prior years is that in prior years, the general assembly is usually held at the end of the conference. This year, the general assembly is actually going to be held Friday morning before the conference ends. So that does make it easier for some of the cities who are traveling farther locations to be able to make sure that they still are able to get home at an adequate time. So I open it up to the City Council to be able to discuss and to make their nominations.
Thank you. Any discussion or any recommendations? Let's all jump out there at once.
Any volunteers?
I will volunteer, having served as a voting.
Have a volunteer for primary. Any objections? How about a secondary? Alternate, okay. The motion for Vice Mayor to be the primary and Councilmember Leanne Jones Cruz as the alternate member voting. Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second those two nominations. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item eleven two, consideration of the options for the selection of the Riverbank representative to the City of Oakdale Ad Hoc Animal Shelter Subcommittee.
Mayor and council, over the past couple of months, both City of Oakdale staff and City of Riverbank staff have received phone calls from concerned residents and nonprofits who assist the shelter, the Oakdale Animal Shelter in their operations regarding some staffing issues regarding the way that they handle certain types of pets that come in, their euthanasia policy, et cetera. Those concerns have been brought forward to the City Council members at the City of Oakdale as well. And so last Monday at their City Council meeting, the City Council from Oakdale decided to put together an ad hoc committee to be able to discuss these concerns, to be able to formulate some recommendations to better assist the operations of the shelter. Through their request from the City of Oakdale, they would like a Riverbank representative as part of that ad hoc committee. We want to make sure that we have a voice. The City of Oakdale provides animal control services to the City of Riverbank since two thousand and nine. So we are definitely a vested partner with them. They're also having an appointed representative from the City of Escalon, who is also under contract with the City of Oakdale for services. And they also have a variety of nonprofits that help the shelter as well, who will have a voice on that committee. What we wanted to bring forward to you today is a request direction from the City Council as to how you would like to make that formal appointment, whether it be a City Council member who would like to volunteer or whether it be a staff person. We have Norma Torres Manriquez, our senior management analyst, who oversees this contract on a day-to-day basis, normally takes those phone calls that are coming in, talks to our animal control officer on a daily basis and with any concerns that they have. And so, or the third option is that we could appoint a Riverbank resident as a representative. We would go through an application process to be able to see who is interested and then bring back a recommendation to the City Council at a future meeting. So those are the three options that we have. What I do want to make clear is that at no point in time does that mean that any other person who's interested in participating wouldn't be able to attend the meetings. The meetings are going to be open to the public. They currently are being held in Oakdale and at the Gene Bianchi Center. They don't have yet a specific date of the month or time, but they will be setting that as soon as the committee is formulated.
Questions? I have several. Do we have a number of individuals on this committee?
So.
The larger it is, the less likely it'll be.
It's going to be, it's already been set as two City Council members from the City of Oakdale. It will be one representative from the Astro Foundation, who is a nonprofit that serves both Riverbank and Oakdale residents. One representative from OSPA, who's the Oakdale Shelter Pet Alliance. One representative from the Animal Shelter Volunteers, and then one Riverbank and one Escalon representative. That will be the entire makeup of the committee itself.
The, is there a charter or goals or, I mean, what are they trying to accomplish?
They are going to set policy recommendations for the operations of the shelter. They'll also look at ways to be able to enhance services and possibly in the future at a new shelter. Yes.
About, will they be listening to any kind of issues that come up? Or is that still going to go like to City Council or?
No, most certainly. So as I mentioned, the committee meetings will be open to members of the public. They'll be able to come in and express their opinions. Obviously, those are Riverbank residents who may not be able to attend would reach out to our Riverbank representative or to the city so that we could pass that information along to whoever's representing Riverbank so that they can then relay that message to the entire committee.
Just a quick question. So the deadline is within a month here. What's the, if we went down the application process, what would that look like? And then would the council make the final decision on?
So what that would look like is yes, we would have to open it up for an application period. The goal is because their next meeting is on August twenty-third, that we try and have somebody appointed by August twenty-second, which is our next meeting, so that they would be able to attend at that time. If we are not able to get either sufficient applications for the City Council or any at all for the City Council to consider, then most likely staff would continue to attend until such time that we can have an appointed representative.
Can this representative report to the City Council every quarter or so?
Most certainly, you can request that they do any type of reporting back that they need to. And at some point in time, depending on the policy recommendations that are being presented and discussed, they would want feedback from the City Council to be able to give our perspective.
Just making sure there's enough feedback coming back. Is there any comments from the public? Come on up.
I've been rescuing here for the past eight years, I believe, taming feral cats, getting them rehomed, adopted. I work with multiple businesses here. I go trap on their properties. They call me when kittens show up, just tons of things like that. I've actually been going to all the meetings already. They've already implemented a lot of things which are really good. They started playing music at the shelter to calm the animals so they don't get kennel crazy. And they got their employees more training. Just tons of good things that have been going on. But I had actually met with Norma last week whenever we went to the meeting. And I did the hoarder house here in Riverbank, so I'm very well-known with animals around here. I have a lot of the public call me. I'm not really good at speaking, I'm a little nervous, so please excuse that. Yeah, so I would like to be appointed, so I'd do the application process. But I'm willing to check in with you guys and do everything I need to do. And yes, so I just want to let you guys know who I am, and I'm willing to do all that, so anyways, thank you.
Questions over? Okay. I was going to volunteer and have Norma as a backup, but this is even better. Do we need to do an application process?
It's entirely up to the City Council. It is.
You don't have to.
You don't have to. It is definitely your discretion.
But we already have someone who's an expert at it and involved in it and and wants to do it, and I don't want to delay. I don't want to delay it, but you know, I'm only one vote.
Would it hurt to open it up for maybe a period of a week and see who else is interested?
Getting the information out and then getting an application is going to be difficult, but we could do it. I really don't see. You already have someone who's volunteering, but if that's the will of the council, yes.
I would like to see a council member on there. And if someone's volunteering, I'd be in support of that, and if they're not, I would be willing to do that too.
I am willing to appoint you, and are there terms to this or anything?
Currently, I'm guessing that through some of the first couple of meetings that they have, that they're going to set parameters for when meeting dates will be, times, how often, you know, what will be the ultimate goal? Because at some point in time, those recommendations will need to come technically to the City of Oakdale City Council since they are the owners, but Riverbank would be able to give their perspective.
Would like to do it too? So we have three who want to do. To appoint. Okay, I would like to be on the ad hoc committee, but you stated you wanted to.
I would support someone volunteering there, and if no one really was dying to, I would be more than happy to do it.
I'm not dying to. However, I think it is important, and I have an individual who does the Modesto, and he's also veterinarian, does a lot of community work for Modesto area. And I always lean on him when we have animal questions. So if I am appointed, I would like to have either you or Norma be an alternate, just in case. Okay, is that okay with you? Is that okay with the council?
I would support that.
Yeah.
Like to make a formal motion and.
I'll make a motion that we accept item eleven point two. Eleven point two, having the mayor on the ad hoc committee and the alternate, and I'm sorry, Markey Wallace.
And I'll second it.
Hey, we have a motion to approve and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Item eleven, I mean twelve one, staff comment.
So our comment from today is going to come from Chief Ridenour.
Good evening. Want to remind the public.
Uh, good evening. Want to remind the public that next, uh, Tuesday night, August first is National Night Out. Um, we're going to host the event at Silver Park. Uh, our fire department's going to be there. We're going to have the sheriff's tactical culinary team cooking, uh, uh, hot dogs. Uh, CBCR is going to be providing snow cones. We're going to have meat, cheese, frozen yogurt. Be a lot of fun games. It's a great night to come out and meet your neighbors, meet your local law enforcement and your fire department and community members. So we hope to see you there. Be five to eight PM Silver Park, August first, next Tuesday night. Hope to see you there.
Thank you. All right, uh, council, uh, comments. That's it for staff. Council comments, starting with Councilmember, uh, Jones Cruz.
I don't have anything tonight.
You agree, babe?
Thank you, Mayor. So this Friday, I'm going to have the opportunity of meeting with the mayor or presidente of our sister city, Tama Sula de Gordiano. Uh, so we're going to be delivering, uh, donated used firefighting equipment, uh, that we as a committee received from the Modesto Fire Department, not Police Department. I've been messing that up all week. Uh, so this is just one small step on how, uh, we'd like to help their community, the mayor of, uh, Tama Sula. Uh, and I are going to be discussing future needs for both cities. Um, looking forward to that discussion. And I'll report back to the committee and to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor? Oh, wait a minute. I'm sorry. Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
Um, I just want to give a big thank you to, uh, Riverbank Police Services. Excuse my allergies. Um, our cities parks and rec department and also our administration departments for, uh, helping me, uh, CBCR to put together the bike rodeo. We probably had, oh, close to a hundred, uh, children that were or youth that were, um, uh, in attendance. And we had over, uh, a hundred, uh, giveaways, not a hundred, but over, I think, close to fifty giveaways. And then we had, uh, thanks to the community and, um, some community organizations and businesses, we gave away twenty-eight bikes. So we had a lot of happy children. Um, so I just want to say thank you for that. And also thank you for the community for bringing their, their children out and, um, we also had some vendors that had, uh, games for them to play, some mind games. Uh, we had free helmets. Each one that, uh, each, uh, child or youth that received a bike were able to receive a, um, bike registration for their bike in case something happened to it is registered with the county. And, um, so it was a really good event. The weather was nice, wasn't too hot. So it was really nice. I just want to say a big thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Um, I have embarked on a six-month program for elected leaders across the state, um, that deals specifically with water. And so, um, that's probably all I'm going to be talking about for six months. And, uh, I mean, there's a lot to learn on the, the, you know, the science behind it, the policy and just how it interacts across the state. So I'm excited to talk to you all about it and just bring more and, um, it'll culminate into a formal presentation for everybody. So, um, more to come.
Thank you. Um, I really would like to, um, have a discussion on our specific plan, I'm not, um, not our specific plan, strategic plan. Uh, if we could, um, sit down and, and have a date where we can, it doesn't have to be a eight-hour day. It could be a three or four-hour day. Uh, but I think we do need to map out what we need to do, um, over the course of this administration here, this, these terms before the twenty twenty-four election. And that way we'll have direction, focus, um, and see what we can resolve between now and then. I want to thank, uh, Senator Alvarado Gill for her, uh, hosting our, uh, meeting with us. And, um, it was really, um, we're really impressed with, uh, the way that she is moving forward as a junior senator. Um, and, um, we appreciated her, um, comments, uh, during our meeting. I also like to, um, uh, have some type of legal help with the CPUC in going forward with their changing, uh, to the CPUC for going forward with PG&E's changing of services, without any authorization and then requiring us to pay for it to be restored. Uh, I think with a eighteen billion dollar revenue or, or profit, uh, from last year, that I think they could restore it the way it should be. With that, uh, we have no closed session. Our next meeting will be August eighth. Ooh, that's canceled. Uh, it's going to be the August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three at six PM. This meeting is now adjourned.